Hold the meeting, hold the meeting in order, roll call please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
Mr. DeSarno?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Morgan?
Ew.
Mr. Munoz?
President.
Mrs. McKnight?
Aye.
Mrs. Belleska?
Aye.
So let the flag. The blood's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just as one. Okay, before we start, I just want to mention that it's Vietnam War Veterans Day. I know a lot of us probably who are my age, we knew a lot of veterans that went over there and served honorably, and we want to thank them for their service. But I'd like to have a moment of silence for the servicemen that passed away. In action, in fact, we had one in New Providence, Sergeant George Hutchinson. He's the only New Providence pioneer that got killed in action, and hopefully he'll be the last. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, we have, it's a public meeting of the Borough Council, Borough of New Providence County, Union State, New Jersey, adequate notice has been given. And according to P L nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one, the annual notice revision was made to conform to section thirteen of the Act. Okay, tonight we have a few ordinances. Ordinance oh one, please please read the title.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one is an ordinance amending section three ten dash thirty-three of the Code of the Borough of New Providence entitled Signs.
Okay, what this is, is a ordinance which made a few minor adjustments to our sign ordinance, which conforms more with the surrounding towns and brings it up to date with the current technology. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, this time we have a public hearing on this, and this ordinance only. Anybody wishing to address counsel? Seeing no one, then declare the public hearing closed, roll call please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
Mr. DeSarno?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Mrs. Belleska?
Aye.
Okay, the next ordinance is oh two, which is, oh, please read the title.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two is an ordinance amending chapter one forty-seven of the Code of the Borough of New Providence entitled Fees and Licenses.
What this is, is that we found that our sewer connection fee was very, very low compared to everybody else, so we're making that adjustment to bring it up to where it should be. Type a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Everybody wishing to address counsel on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Please raise your hand. Seeing no one, then declare the public hearing closed, roll call please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
Mr. DeSarno?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Mrs. Belleska?
Aye.
Okay. We're ready to roll with the ordinances. Ordinance oh three, please read the title.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three is an ordinance amending ordinance two thousand fourteen dash one, which created a Department of Community Activities and Community Activities Advisory Board.
Okay, what this does is eliminate the Community Activities Advisory Board. And we found that the employees and staff were able to do this without the advisory board, so. Kind of motion, please.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, anybody wishing to address counsel on that ordinance and that ordinance only? Please raise your hand. Seeing no one, then declare the public hearing closed, roll call please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
Mr. DeSarno?
Yes.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz? Yes.
Mrs. McKnight?
Yes.
Mrs. Belleska?
Aye.
Okay. When we go down, we have a presentation by the Community Pool Board. Tom and Danny, welcome. Before we start, I just want to thank you for all you've done. The past two years have not been very fun, to say the least. I know you had to make a lot of changes last year in scheduling and, you know, I just want to, everybody had a hard time. And I just want to thank you for providing the service you were able to provide last year. So at that, at this point, please.
All right, well, thank you. I'll introduce myself, I'm Tom Fohian, but Vice President of Community Pool, I've been on the pool board probably eight or nine years.
Dan Oberghauser, and I'm the treasurer, and I've been on the board about two months, so relatively new. So all the thank you is to him, not to me.
But so I want to start off by thanking you guys, you guys were incredible. During the pandemic, I spent countless hours talking to my pool liaisons, councilman, mayor, bird of death, I mean, you guys were incredibly supportive, Marvin too, so thank you guys. I mean, we wouldn't have got through this without you guys, for sure, so we appreciate your support, and it's been valuable. And a little plug for my management team, I just want to thank my all-star team of managers, who you guys probably know, Steve Hughes, Chris Crumby, Dan Marletta, Jackie Boeberry, and Kenny Platt, so if you see them around town, they're smiling faces, they're the reason the pool is the pool. Ninety-nine, hundred and ten percent, so. All right, so real quickly, fantastic news, we're returning to the pre-COVID New Providence Community Pool, which we're calling the old normal, not the new normal, the old normal, we're going old school. So we're going to be open every day, twelve to eight, and we're looking to expand those hours. Playground is open, the basketball court is open, the shuffleboard is open, four-square paint pile, diving board, snack bar, everything is open. We're so excited. It's so easy to just be able to be happy. So we couldn't be happier about that, so we're, I didn't mention, we're happy about that. I shared with you our P and L, or some financials that we have, I don't know if you have those, I just want to just run through those real quick. So there's kind of two layers to our finance. Our finances is one is the P and L, and the second is the reserve stuff. So the P and L, which we can go through real quickly, as you can see, we laid out a couple different seasons, two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, our budget. And as you can see, two thousand twenty, we got crushed because of COVID. We lost money, which is, you know, very hard for a not-for-profit. Two thousand twenty-one, we bounced back, and in two thousand twenty-two, we're kind of headed back in the right direction. So I think it's important to note, if you're looking at these numbers, like, you see our revenue has kind of been flat, it's been up, down, and it's trending in the right direction. In fact, you'll see a marketing line on here that we added, so we're going to spend some money this year to try to raise and elevate our membership and get it out there, try to increase our membership. Because if you look down at the rent part here, the expenses, chemicals, insurance, everything is going through the roof. And probably our single biggest expense is the minimum wage. You know, we have forty thousand hours worked this season, hour long, so every dollar that goes up, that's forty big ones, so that hurts us significantly. So unfortunately, we have to adjust fees accordingly. Which brings me to the next point, if you jump to our reserve study, or the ten-year capital reserve analysis page, you see in the upper left-hand corner, it says cash on hand, it shows you what we have, and it says the quarter year expenses, it's a hundred ninety-six thousand, so that's basically the money that takes us to open and run most of the pool. So we need that money in the bank beforehand, before we start getting fees, so we always have to have that as a cushion. Then we have emergency fund, which is fifty thousand, that's if a tree falls, or god forbid something happens and we need it. And then lastly, it's the capital reserve, and that's for the big-ticket items, you know, playgrounds, basketball courts, concrete, pumps, et cetera. And as you can see on there, there's a couple of big-ticket items that I'll bring to your attention. Let's see, yeah, so in two thousand twenty-six, we're starting to spend like almost two hundred fifteen thousand dollars, two thousand twenty-eight, seventy-seven thousand, two hundred thirty, a hundred fifty, two thousand thirty-one, almost four hundred thousand. This isn't your backyard pool, it's a massive operation, so these costs are through the roof, and these are projections over useful lives and whatnot. So, you know, we're trying to plan ahead, some past projects, we just got a new pool cover, which we spent a hundred twenty grand on, we resurfaced the upper lower pool, which was about three hundred twenty-five thousand, we got new diving board, so we're in good shape, but we just, we're projecting that the useful life on these things are fading, so we just need to be cognizant of that. So you can see on the reserve study, you see where we are in two thousand twenty-two and where we're going in two thousand twenty-one, the bottom line, we're going to play catch-up for the next, for the foreseeable future. So that's that. Next is our trustees, I just want to talk about this for a second, so we've always had thirteen trustee spots, we typically only had eleven. We found three new folks, young folks to join us, which we're super excited about, so we're hoping to pass the tone to everyone, and we couldn't be more excited about.
I give standing, wonderful, right? How many years until I get out of the young crowd? Not long till the young.
So yeah, so that's our trustees, and then just one other thing that I want to talk about that we're super proud, is our swim and dive team, which you probably don't know unless you've had a swimmer or a diver, but we have over two hundred twenty-five kids in the programs between swim and dive, which is amazing, and like, again, it's not one of the advertised sports, it doesn't seem like it's there, but it's there, and we have a competitive and developmental program, so basically anybody who wants to do anything gets exposure to do it. We've got two coaches, Walter, Kevner from high school, who's been with us ten years, Kenny Platt's been with us ten years, so it's an amazing program. In fact, just to talk about some of their athletes, they've won three dive championships in the last three years, three in a row. We host four hundred swimmers for the meet of champions, so I don't know, if you noticed, towards the end of the swim season, the parking lot, we just overflow, we flow over to OLP and we have the meet of champions, which is probably, I think it's eighteen different, eighteen different swim and dive programs that come, and we host it because we have a swimming facility. And lastly, one of the other things we do, which we're super proud of, is we do the swim for food and dive, so the kids volunteer their time, they raise money, and we donate the food, which is to the local pantries, I think we do it with the CSA, always taken. So yeah, so we're super proud of that. Lastly, the other thing we submitted to you guys was our tentative activity schedule, so we're super excited to say we're getting back, and there's a list of all of the stuff that's happening, you're all welcome to come. So we have a couple, two to determine items, the last thing that I wanted to bring up, and then I'll open it up to questions if you guys have anything for me, but I just, on the event schedule, there's one thing, there's one thing I want to talk about, in addition to what you see there, you see the water fitness class, we host this class, they're mostly seniors, they love it, we're looking at doing yoga, zumba, we're looking at doing a book club at the library, we're trying to figure that out, we have team movie nights, we're exploring all kinds of things, and we're open to anything, so anyone has suggestions on activities we're in. But the last thing is the adult trivia night, which we're trying to host, so in doing some research, essentially our current lease, which right now prohibits us from having alcohol at the pool, so we don't want that abolished at all, but we do want to have it, like, be by O B night for adults to try to gain some, we want to get the parents in the pool so they can see our facility, and maybe it's a trivia night or whatever, so we'd like to apply for a permit, but we can't because our lease prohibits it. So counsel would need to put an amendment or at least have that changed in some way so that we can do it one night with special permission, you know, once a year, so if you consider that we can do it.
Yeah, I think we have to look at that, what the insurance qualifications are, but we'll see where we go from there, okay.
All right, so that's all I have, unless you guys have some questions.
No, I'm very impressed with the activity schedule.
Yeah.
Remember when I was a kid, you know, you never had any of that, you know, impressive, very impressive.
I like how you set out your ten-year kind of forecast, so you know what expenses are coming in, you're already starting to budget for them. So I see that you have that, you mentioned that five thousand dollar marketing line for this current year, right? Did you guys thought about changing the name at all, the community pool to something maybe a little?
We did, so we've had this conversation for a long time, about the private community pool versus like our cool, excuse me, private school club. So yeah, so we've certainly been considering for a long time, and I opened up to you guys to give feedback and suggestions on how to handle that, I don't know if there's, you guys have a strong feeling one way or the other, but we're looking at kind of evolving it to a pool club, because I don't know if you've ever been on, if you had kids on swim or dive, and you went to the other facilities, they're nowhere near ours, you know, we have definitely a very kind of culture club kind of feel to it, we want to kind of keep that in the name, so we really need to kind of maybe rebrand and relaunch something, you know, post-COVID to really get out there. So yeah, so that's certainly something that's on the table, so I'd welcome your feedback on that. Is there anything related to naming rights in the leasing agreement? I wonder.
Naming rights?
Yeah, yeah.
I doubt it, you know, look, but I doubt it.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely, sorry, it's definitely one of the biggest disconceptions when people move to town, right, is that, ah, it's a community pool, I'm going to go, you know, to another club pool or something, right? Where, who knows what club pools are there in town and blah, 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 right? So, so definitely something worthwhile looking into, right, I'm sure, from your perspective. I just, I know, you know, we worked, and by the way, you got, it's amazing how you were able to not only manage the, you know, COVID environment, and be able to provide such an amazing service to the community, right? Everybody that was able to get out and go use the pool during that time was so excited and happy to be able to do that, right? And, you know, that was a Herculean effort, right, from not just the board at the pool, but every employee that had to show up, right, and work, right, during that time, so kudos to you guys for being able to pull that off, and, you know, just an amazing service to the community. So I know we worked in the past, you guys, like, on the basketball courts, right, so that was a very successful, you know, joint project between the borough and the park. We talked a little bit about the bridge at some point, we were going back and forth on the bridge, and I know, I think the bridge had some structural damage that we were looking into as far as replacing, we're also doing the walkway around, around the pool, which is nice, but is there anything else structurally or any other projects that you could, and if you don't, not today, but if you come up with something? So two things that are on our radar is, one, is the bridge and the parking lot, we kind of look at those as two things, I guess it was about six, seven, eight years ago, we did our lease, we structured a deal where it was, I think it was seventy-five, twenty-five responsibility. So we're certainly saving for that, I'm worried about that, because the parking lot's going to be a massive expense. And for us, it's like, you know, we're spending all this money on the parking lot, not, you know, for the pool, but not really the pool itself, so that's certainly a concern of ours, so the bridge is on the radar. We have the lower pool, so we've always talked about extending our season too, because we always felt like it's short, and you can either do that with heat or lights, so lights was something that we kind of talked about every couple of years, and when we did the basketball court project, we put in that big, I don't know if you remember this.
Station?
That box that can house the electric electricity that we would need to either heat or light up the pool, so I think it's about nine years out, but we're looking at resurfacing the decking area in the lower pool, so that would be the time, and we'd probably look to, if we can save enough money and drive membership, then we could put in lights, and then we could do like a team night, we could stay up until the Friday night, and have teams only, like, we see it as like a win-win for, you know, not only just the pool members themselves, but maybe because we can do some cool stuff with lights.
I was just going to quickly thank both of you for your time this evening, your passion and energy and excitement for the pool and everything it is for the community, as is clearly apparent. I also think it's great that you're so forward-looking and trying to continue to make it better and better and better, and it's something that I think, from one time or another, we've all had a chance to enjoy, so that's great, so thank you again.
I think we're actually playing on the, looking at that bridge next year, right, Bernard? Because I got to tell you, just trying to get the other bridge is going to the schools, it's a nightmare with the supply chain issues and everything else, so they engineered so we could get away with another year with no problem, so.
Yeah, we minimized vehicle driving over it, so we're going to keep it as much as cool bridge as possible.
Yeah.
And we were, when we looked at that a few years back, you know, with the pool, we were looking at it to say, you know, that's, that bridge is important, right, like, not only structurally but visually, right? It's like the entrance to the school, it's the entrance to the pool, right? You know, the tennis courts, right? And so we were not only just talking about the bridge itself, but, you know, how do we make the surrounding area of the bridge, you know, plants and facade of the bridge, et cetera, so maybe an opportunity, once we get down the road of looking at that bridge, looking back at not only just the bridge itself, but, you know, making that area a little bit nicer.
The insurance you pay for, for the pool, what is that for? Just like workers' comp, or does that include liability insurance?
Insurance, no, it's everything, and, you know, the diving boards, something you have on that, which is a very expensive thing, a lot of that insurance, but I think it's seventy, eighty, eighty-three thousand, yeah, I mean, that's just gone through the roof, there's nothing we can do about it.
So that's your liability coverage, basically?
Basically, yeah.
So how does that play into our liability issue then, if we were to permit them to amend the lease?
In speaking with our insurance company, there would have to be higher levels of liability insurance, they are not proponents of it, as we've discussed.
But I mean, they have, they have their own policy, why does that affect us?
The insurance company just feels that, you know, given the nature of what it is, they're not openly willing at this point to do that, but we can take a look at it.
But I'm saying, like, why should the Borough JIF be involved in that, if they have their own liability policy?
I presume the JIF has concerns that the Borough will be included in the suit?
Correct.
That's, that's why, I mean, I don't know what the Borough's liability would be in that scenario, but that's the JIF's position, right or wrong, that's what we have to deal with.
But that can be overcome by, what do you call it?
Excess.
Yeah, just an agreement, for an old harmless or identification agreement on behalf of the pool to the Borough.
Well, it's got to be, yes, but it's got to be something satisfactory to the JIF.
Okay. So it's, it's an overcome obstacle, but we can overcome.
Yeah, it's doable, it's doable.
Need a lawyer or something?
Anybody else?
I just want to thank you guys also, so that was one highlight that we had during the pandemic, was going to the pool, you know, even with the abbreviated hours and everything, so we're definitely looking forward to full-time going back to the pool. I also like the idea of rebranding.
Yeah.
That you were talking about. Like Matt was saying, a lot of times people may overlook the benefits and the beauty of the pool just by hearing the name, so I think anything that you could do for rebranding would help with your marketing, would help with a different image, especially now post-COVID, it's like a new kickoff, it's a new fresh start, I think that's a great idea.
Maybe as a fundraiser, you know, we named the naming rights, the Al Morgan.
You should do a.
That's true.
You should do an open house, right, you ever think of that?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, there is no comparison between the New Providence Pool and other surrounding pools.
That would be a great idea.
Invite them to come and see it.
Yeah.
Said invite folks to come and see.
Oh yeah, so we've talked about this idea for years, trying to have like a New Providence Day, and hosting the pool, and like the fire department there, you know, all kinds of stuff, and we just haven't figured out how to do it, but we, like you said, we have some new trustees, in fact, one of whom's specialty is marketing, so she's really excited, that's why we gave her a budget to go crazy with, I mean, small budget, the smallest budget on, that's the floaties, but yeah. So we're going to try to drive membership, so we'd love to partner with you guys to do some kind of New Providence Day.
Sure, that would be great.
Hopefully, we'll be able to do a New Providence show, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we need a couple of minutes, more change, please.
Just, I talked to you about that one update for.
Wendy, you've already done it, you might have an older question.
I'm online, I just checked, it wasn't done, so.
I'll have her, I'll have her fix it.
Can you make the motion as amended?
Yeah, I mean, a second. Start to make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, we had correspondence, a biennial certification for groundwater remediation for empty fuel, New Providence Fire Department, resignation, Ryan Tony, and we want to thank Ryan for his service at the fire department. Kevin Cheater, want of adjustment hearing, New Jersey American Water, proposed rate hike increase public hearing, and Jane McCreedy, who is the pastor of Faith Lutheran, they want to have a interfaith vigil for the people of Ukraine, and they're going to do it on April thirteenth at six o'clock, I'm here at Centennial Park, I hope we'll all attend, okay? All right, please, Black Pastor McCreedy, I don't think we're very excited about it. Okay, let's go to council business administration, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor. We have resolution twenty twenty-two oh eighty-seven, which is a resolution extending outdoor dining and outdoor music provisions to assist local businesses impacted by the coronavirus public health emergency. This resolution extends outdoor dining until June thirtieth of this year to allow businesses the opportunity to apply to the zoning board and get a hearing date if desired to keep their dining in place. The resolution also includes outdoor displays and music, as they have typically gone together hand in hand through this public health emergency.
Thank you. May Dean, Business and Professional Association.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero eight eight is a resolution approving request of the New Providence Business Community to sponsor community events during the calendar year twenty twenty-two. So this resolution was brought to us by the BPA, it is a letter that we received from the president, Michelle Alfante, and this allows the business community to work with the Borough on some exciting events that they usually do for us. There are seven events that are planned this year. In June, they help with the sharing network, five K. In July, we have the concert series, so three outdoor concerts at the gazebo. August is the National Night Out with fireworks and a concert. In October, they have the downtown scarecrow stroll and contest, trick-or-treating, street fair, and November, the holiday walk. One little notice that I want, or one little piece of information that I want to put with this is, this year, the Business Association is not doing the July third fireworks, they had it combined last year with the National Night Out. However, as a Borough, we would like to go back to the tradition of July third, family fun festivities, which has been such a great event that I know my family, as well as many other families, have to look forward to. So as a Borough, we will be having fireworks and festivities on July third, more information will follow, that's not included with this, but that is something that we are looking to do.
But D, I want to do, I want to thank the Business Association, they've gone through a tough two years, where they really, they don't have the funds to do the July third, and we, I want to thank them for doing what they're doing, I know it's a stretch for them. I think it's incumbent on us, try and find some other sponsors out there that, you know, maybe some of the bigger corporations, see if they can help us out, and I don't think it's, it's really a necessity, especially these times, that we celebrate our American independence and our freedom, because right now, we could see what people go through that don't have the freedoms that we do, so I think it's very important that we do this, so.
And I would also like to thank the businesses for doing this, because they have gone through a lot, we've had a continued ongoing relationship with them, they've helped us when they, when we've needed them, now we're going to help, and we're going to do it in conjunction with them, and we're going to help them out as well, so I think, I definitely agree, it's time to get back to full celebrations of our country's independence, and I think it's something families need, family fun time to come together, and that's always been an outstanding tradition that we have, so we'll be returning, we'll be returning to that.
So you're all agreed with that?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're clear, we're going to host the July third fireworks.
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to approve these activities, which also include fireworks at the National Night Out.
In August.
In August.
It's going to be a great time.
Which I, which I just want to say, like, I, I'm a little concerned about too much fireworks, to be honest, right? I think I agree with you, like, these guys have been through a lot, and, you know, I just want to note that, you know, maybe we take note of this, you know, going forward, you know, that we're not shooting fireworks off at every function, right? So, you know, I'm glad that we're doing the July third, I think it's very, very important, and I get that these guys have been through a tough time, and they want to sponsor that at the National Night Out, which by the way, was a phenomenal event last year, right? I think, anyway, here, we all agree, I mean, that was, everything was perfect about the location, all the events, et cetera, but that is a concern, just want to make sure I vocalize.
I think we need a lot of happiness this summer, I think we're overdue to have celebrations and people coming together, return to normalcy, return to tradition, and I think, you know, maybe we won't do this going forward in the future, but this year, I think we need a little extra joy and happiness.
Well, I think it's important to note that the business, we can't tell the Business Association how to spend their money, you know, so I think that's something that we have to take, take into consideration and just say, thank you for what you're doing, because, you know, they don't have to do anything, you know, so I just want to say thank you. So I just want to say thank you to them because it's their money and how they want to spend it is up to them, not up to us.
I disagree, you know, the, the fireworks, again, not everybody likes fireworks all the time, okay? And I just want to be clear, you know, I think I, I'm, I'm okay with having fireworks at this event. I just don't think it's something that we want to start incorporating in every event that we have in town, that's all I'm saying, okay?
Okay, let's move on. Uh, Matt, engineering?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero eight-nine is a resolution authorizing upgrades of repair work at the De Corso Center. So as you guys know, the De Corso Center was, um, you know, decimated by the storm, right? Um, and we have been, uh, working on fixing that up, uh, all the storm damage, uh, over the last, you know, few months. Uh, so this resolution authorizes us to do some additional work to coincide with that work, that remediation work that's being done now. So, uh, this includes replacing some ceiling tiles to match the ceiling tiles that were damaged that are being replaced, as well as cleaning and painting ceiling grids, uh, and replacing the carpeted areas and vinyl composite tiles with solid vinyl wood planks.
Okay.
All right, onto finance. So, resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine-zero is a resolution authorizing payment of the attached bills payable list in the amount of five hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Uh, some of the, the significant items related to this bills payable list is state of New Jersey, one hundred three thousand, six hundred nine dollars, March State Health Benefit Premium, uh, DLS Contracting, seventy-one thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars, emergency road repair on Central Avenue, which was due to Hurricane Ida, as well as a grinder of twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars for our wastewater treatment plant. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine-one is a resolution authorizing emergency temporary appropriations. Um, as we have been doing, uh, each meeting, this is a resolution that provides for the continued operations of the Borough before the budget is finalized. Next we have the introduction of the twenty twenty-two municipal budget. So this first, uh, is an introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero four, calendar year twenty twenty-two ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Uh, this, um, ordinance, you know, we do this each year, uh, we're allowed to raise our taxes by up to three and a half percent. Um, we go on typically, um, go under that, right? So the difference goes into the cap bank, which then we can use over the next two years. Um, this allows us to be able to tap into that cap bank if anything unexpected should happen. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine-two is a resolution approving introduction of the twenty twenty-two municipal operating budget and establish a hearing date. So this is, uh, this resolution establishes the hearing date, which is scheduled for April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty P M here in the municipal center, at which time we will give a more detailed presentation on the entire budget and the process. Uh, the budget will be available for anyone, um, online, or you can come pick up a copy here, uh, at the Borough Hall. Uh, some details to note, the operating budget does not take into consideration the rescue plan money, uh, as we discussed last year's budget. Uh, you know, we are not allowed to use those monies to, to lower our taxes, right? Uh, we will discuss in detail how we are using the, our money, uh, at the, uh, here. Uh, the tax rate for twenty twenty-two will increase one point nine eight percent on the average home in New Providence that is assessed at three hundred three thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars. That equates to a sixty-one dollars per year tax increase on the municipal portion of their taxes. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero nine-three is a resolution approving introduction and establish downtown improvement district twenty twenty-two budget hearing date. This is the downtown improvement districts budget, uh, there are, uh, there's a slight decrease in the budget from prior year due to, uh, a few, a few small items. It's consistent with prior years.
Okay. Pete, community activities.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two ninety-four is a salary resolution. Um, I think we're adding two, uh, T-ball instructors there from up a second. Hit them where they ain't.
Okay, uh, ninety-five, uh, it's a resolution supporting the New Jersey statewide two thousand twenty-two, you drive, the tax you pay, distracted driving crackdown. Now this will be a, a crackdown on distracted, uh, driving between April first and April thirtieth. So don't be on your cell phones, please. Um, they, they say that forty-nine percent of the, uh, accidents that occur are due to distracted driving. And I kind of believe that because I kind of see it myself out there, so. Uh, okay, any discussion items? See none, uh, discussion items, uh, public safety, I just said, the, uh, the, uh, distracted driving, uh, we did a, uh, some interviews for class two officers. Uh, a couple of them, uh, went to other places, uh, like, get full-time jobs and, uh, you know, we're having, we, we've gotten very good class two officers and the process really works. So it's also a good way when, when we have retirements, that, uh, we're able to see what kind of, uh, uh, personnel that we can, uh, draw from. Okay, uh, the other thing, we shared dispatch, we had a meeting and then going to, um, start an operations board. So to make sure that all the operations are stand, standardized and being, uh, made more efficient. So, um, that's all I have. Uh, Matt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, Rob will talk about Board of Health, uh, meeting. Regard regards to the planning board, we didn't have a meeting, the, um, Finance Committee is working on the budget hearing, so we'll be working on that over the next few weeks, uh, and presenting that in the next meeting. I did just want to mention relating, uh, to I guess engineering construction, P S E and G, as Bernadette knows, um, has been in my block for months now, right? They're putting in a high, uh, efficiency gas line, which they will be doing throughout the entire Borough, right? If I'm not mistaken, um, they've been there for a few months, it's a, it's a major project, right? And it's the infrastructure of the gas line that's under the, under the, you know, the roads. So, um, you know, I've been able to get out and walk the dog and meet these guys and talk to them almost every day, right? And they're really, really great guys and, and they're working, you know, obviously to knock this out. They've been there a long time, and I'm sure a lot of my neighbors are very frustrated, and I know Bernadette's been getting phone calls, I'm sure, from not only, you know, people on the block, but, you know, people in the park where they were parking their cars and whatnot. So I just wanted to just bring it up to just say, uh, you know, they're gonna be here for probably a couple of years, if I'm not mistaken, right? I mean, they've been on my block for a few months, one block, right? So, uh, they're gonna be here for a few years, and I know, Abby had mentioned this, you know, a couple meetings ago, um, that we're just gonna need to be patient, right? And at the end of the day, you know, we're, you know, these guys are doing their jobs, right? And, and they're putting in new infrastructure, you know, throughout the Borough, um, so, yeah, just wanted to.
I'm glad you brought that up because, uh, it is important. Um, I mean, problem, most of New Providence is built, I mean, in the fifty, sixty, seventies. The materials they used back then, you know, aren't what they are today. Now, uh, the gas lines have to be changed because they're using high-pressure gas. Uh, I know they, I, I tell the story, I live on a corner and I have them digging up on both sides. But, um, we give the utility companies a list of roads that we're planning on paving every year. And we ask them to cooperate with us to do all the construction that they have to do before we pave that road. It only makes sense, it doesn't always work that way, but in between the, the gas company and the water company, I mean, we've, we've had some, some problems and there's no doubt about it. It's, uh, it's, all the utilities, including, uh, Jersey Central, we're at their mercy. And that's just the way it works. So we try to mitigate everything before we run into a problem, but Woodbank Circle unfortunately is a very large, uh, road in the Borough and it's very inconvenient and I, I understand that and it's tough when you have Oakwood Park, the activity's going down there. So please be patient, uh, by the time it's all done and repaved and everything else, I, you know, hopefully everybody will be happy. So, okay, thanks for bringing that up, Matt. Um, anything else? Nope, Pete?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Capital Review Committee, I, I want to thank, uh, we've been, a lot of hard work going on there. Uh, committee consists of Mayor Morgan, um, Councilwoman Jeffrey, our Borough Administrator, uh, Bernadette Kikara, our CFO, um, reaching conclusion, uh, will be presenting in the upcoming council meetings, uh, or, or end product. Um, Community Activities Board, a, a number of, of, of important announcements, youth and adult spring session classes begin this week. The Recreation Department is also hosting several spring break, uh, camps that still have availability for, um, April eighteenth to the twenty-second. Summer registration is open on Community Pass, the Recreation Department is offering many camp and class options for all ages. Uh, the De Corso Center will be reopening on Monday, May second, after the completion of its renovations due to damages sustained in Hurricane Ida. Uh, we're of course very excited to welcome our seniors back. The fishing derby returns this year on Saturday, May seventh. Um, residents can register on Community Pass beginning this Friday, April first. Tennis court permits go on sale beginning May first and the court reservations begin May twenty-seventh. And finally, um, something that's very exciting, the Memorial Day Parade will return this year on Monday, uh, May thirtieth at ten o'clock. I know that how much the community, um, enjoys that, I, I know living on Springfield Avenue is something that's a highlight of our year. Well, uh, if your community group would like to march in the parade, please call the Recreation Office for more information. Um, I'd like to also tell you our sustainability team met on March twenty-third. Um, some more talk about how to, uh, continue to make the free cycle even better than it's been in previous years. It's always a, a, a struggle within that event to, we're trying to obviously have equal supply and demand. We take in a lot of things, but we're, we're trying to figure out a way to get people to take more with them. Yeah, so, so, you know, we've, we, you know, we're putting it there with different ideas. One of the suggestions was like, you know, being more, uh, active on social media, saying, hey, we got this great table, you know, come down and get it or something like that. Or, or having, you know, people make kind of a commitment coming in, whatever you bring, you look to take an equal amount with you. I mean, the idea is obviously to, to repurpose, recycle, to, to, to give something a second life. So, uh, we'll try to encourage that more and more. And then finally, tree sapling giveaway, I mentioned this before, scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-third, from ten to two. That's a popular event, uh, always well attended, and it's over here in the library. If you're facing the library, it's traditionally on the parking lot to the right, so, uh, look for that, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just one little quick thank you as we just finished this budget cycle. I just wanted to take a moment to really thank Bernadette, um, and her staff for everything that they've done during this budget process. Um, they've done a great job and I just wanted to note them for that. So Bernadette, Denise, Wendy, Kathy, thank you guys so much for everything you've done. I know you've put in a lot of time and I just don't want that to be unnoticed. Other than that, operations go on.
I just want to remind everyone before I forget that the, uh, New Providence Police Department is hosting Coffee with a Cop tomorrow at the Prestige Diner from two to three thirty. So at the last meeting, I had reported that there was an issue with the Board of Ed, I'm sorry, the Board of Health contract with, uh, Westfield. So we had an emergency meeting last Tuesday, uh, where we found out that Westfield has come back with us now with our original three-year contract that they're willing to execute. So, um, we signed it and sent it to them last week, you know, we should, we should have the signed copy back soon if not already.
It's good news.
Um, and it's the same price that we had negotiated with, you know, with them last, last year. So, uh, I think it's a big cost savings, a cost benefit, uh, for the Borough. I had also reported that a food truck had applied, uh, for a permit to serve food outside of Untied Brewery. But unfortunately, I don't think they're gonna get that permit, uh, they couldn't prove that they actively cooked the food in the truck. We think that they may cook it at the person's house, which is not permissible, and then they heat it up in the truck. So you obviously can't do that, so we're still, hopefully we're somebody to fill that spot at Untied. Uh, that's all I have.
Okay, peace.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had a library board meeting on March fifteenth and the library is very happy to report that they are getting back to normal or what, what did Dan say? What, I don't know, what did you call it? Not the old normal, we're getting back to the old normal, so, which is great. Uh, the Friends of the Library are gonna have a couple of events, the first one is April third, it's gonna be a live opera. Uh, June twelfth, they also are having some type of concert, I haven't decided on that yet. Um, in-person story time for the kids, yes, starting in April, so that'll be great for them. Um, another thing that came up at the meeting was that we are being approached by a couple of different consortiums. Uh, right now, we belong to the Union County Consortium, which means that we can go out to other libraries within Union County and share resources and books and materials, but we're also being approached by Middlesex County as well as Morrison-Hudson Counties. Um, so it's, it's really great to have some of those choices. Um, like I said, that would mean we could go to Chatham or Madison or Moorestown for materials. Uh, so we're still kind of fleshing that out, one of the thing, one of the downsides was of that is that we would have to change the catalog software, which would be a big, a big endeavor, but, uh, just, yeah, something to think about, and they, and we are thinking about it. Um, the other thing is the strategic plan that I spoke about, uh, last time is underway. Uh, they are using consultants for direction and opportunities. So, um, we're, they're getting started with that with some fact gathering and some, um, opinion gathering from, uh, a couple of different focus groups. So they're gonna start with the staff, um, in May, the company is gonna be there for three days to meet with the staff, the board. They're also gonna put an appeal out to the rest of the community, they would like to speak to residents. So if you're interested in, in, you know, participating in that focus group for the library, that's an opportunity. Um, and there'll also be speaking with the Friends of the Library, so that, you know, it's, it's a good kickoff, so hopefully that, that works out well. Um, and that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. So the Board of Education had their last meeting last Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Um, Michael Cristello, who is just coming off a huge season with the N P G L Ice Hockey Team, has been named the new assistant principal for grades seven to eight, um, our middle school, which is an internal move, go NP. Um, other big news was Jim Testa, who is the Business Administration Administrator for the District for the past twenty years, received a distinguished service award by his state association, so good things for New Providence. Um, and as always, you can always go to their website and look at the past minutes and, and other information for the Board of Education. The Historical Society Annual Dinner, um, will be on Thursday, April twenty-first at Chimney Rock Inn and the program is entitled Remember the Ladies, Women of the American Revolution. So that seems to be a very interesting topic and well worth going. And, uh, members of our Historical Society met with our county for the, I'm not going to try to remember how to pronounce it, so you can quiz me next time, the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of our independence, um, which is in twenty twenty-six. So they're already starting to work on that and have ideas and it's gonna be very exciting in a couple of years.
That should be fun.
Mm-hmm. And as an aside, uh, the Borough is still looking for three more members for the Historic Preservation Commission.
I have one.
I think we just got one today in the email, we just got one on email.
So we can put in more names. And, um, Michael Cristello also was named New Jersey Country of Youth for hockey and we want to congratulate him for that. Uh, it's quite an honor.
Congratulations.
We've had a few, Party Catano and, you know.
Amazing, amazing success, this town is phenomenal.
Yes.
We'll be having hockey here in.
And, and Mike too.
And Diane, congratulations to you and all those responsible for a successful fashion show the other night, that was a wonderful event.
The high school.
Did you go, Pete?
I did. I had a participant, sure.
What did he, uh?
No, participant, no.
Greatest, the greatest thing. He didn't participate.
No, 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 I wasn't on these things. I meant, I had a daughter, that was.
Good point.
Here, I'll give you a shameless plug. It's the, um, high school PTSA's major fundraiser, and it's student-centered. So the students are the models for the fashion show. We had students running, runners and ushers, running baskets, running props around, and all the kids worked the booth and all of the tech and the auditorium, so it's a great experience.
Wonderful.
It was great. Another, in fact, the old normal.
And all the money goes back to the.
All the money goes back to the high school PTSA, so all the students benefit. So excellent. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so it's spring, which means it's the beginning of our construction season here in the borough. Um, the sidewalk, um, vendor is in town doing sidewalk replacement and repairs. Um, they're currently on Central, they've been on Hawthorne, there are a few blocks in, um, by Roberts. During spring break, we'll be, we'll be installing a brand-new sidewalk in front of Roberts School, um, so that's slated for, uh, when nobody's around. Um, following the sidewalks, we also have the pavers will be in town, starting probably in May. Um, and there's about 10 or 15 roads that will get up on the website, um, that will be, um, paved this spring. The Me Lane and Dunlop Street bridges, the abutments have been replaced, and at this point, we're just waiting for the delivery of the actual bridges to go on. Um, they're hoping for an April, end of April, beginning of May, um, delivery and installation on those. Um, and the last thing I just want to mention that nobody else did is that the Police Department, uh, Police Trading Card Program is out there. Um, if you're in pre-aid grades eight, um, you can get your police, uh, baseball cards at, um, either the Avenue Deli, Bagel Cafe, there you go, Mayor Morgan, Dr. Robinson's office, Dunkin' Donuts, Elafonte, the Juice House, Prestige Diner, Skin Deep, YK Salon, and Zetas. They all have about three officers each, so if you want the entire 30-card collection, um, you have to hit all the vendors. That's all I have.
I have a question, actually. Uh, you mentioned sidewalks, just made, made me think of something. Um, so the war company's doing a lot of replacement of hydrants and, and valves around town, and I noticed, uh, two things. One, they took up the curving to put this thing, the hydrant in, and then they blacktopped over the curving. And then another incident I saw, they, they actually blacktopped the sidewalk itself.
So, so with all of our, um, with all of our utility companies, so if there's a water main break, and they come and replace, you know, they fix, they repair the breakage, they will put a temporary patch, and they have an entirely different crew that will come back and either replace the sidewalk, put your grass down, cart away the branches or whatever else, you know, was created from that repair or installation.
Okay, so that's a temporary thing.
It's a temporary.
Thank you.
You don't think it's going to be efficient?
Well, I just want to make sure that they're, they're.
And they're not always right behind them. That's the other.
Oh, that's, that's exactly right. So, okay, at this time, we have public comment. Anybody wishing to address council, raise your hand, get their name and address. Seeing no one, and clear the public hearing close. Uh, okay, I need motion for items 1 through 10, please.
So move. I'll second that.
Welcome.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
Mr. Disarna?
Aye.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
Mr. Twain?
Yes.
Mr. Faleska?
Aye.
Okay. Motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No? So be it. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good night.
I love the rub. All right. Easy, easy.